I've heard of it, I've seen it. And that's what it was across from between From Away and Lincoln. So we never go there.
Which are really kind of different.
You know, I like going to Taco John's.
Yeah, Taco John's. I guess supposedly they're gonna go watch. Taco Bell in KFC or somehow.
Hey.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, come on, don't, don't.
Are you all good now?
There it is.
I didn't. I didn't. I know that they, ownership company owns.
Yeah.
I tell you what, in every.
Inside, surprise.
In every.
I did the KFC Taco Bell.
Okay. A turn. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order for the City of North Platte Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call vote.
Davies.
Here.
McKeon.
Here.
Matthews. Bain.
Here.
Fudge. Get.
Here.
Forbes.
Here.
Whirl.
Here.
And Van Velson.
Who?
Van Velson.
Yes.
A quorum is present.
Alrighty, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted at the back of the council chambers. Next, I will entertain a motion for an approval of the meeting minutes from the meeting held on September 24th of 2024.
I move we.
I move we approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Van Velson, second by McKeon. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Oh, clicker.
Oh, click or vote. Got the clicker.
Um.
Uh oh. My number is your clicker. Two?
Something about.
Um, I don't know, what?
Address two?
Two?
Count two. Should be what?
Says two.
He has two.
I can't get back to it. Oh, nope, he has those two mixed up. Oh, hold on, two there. Three there.
The minutes do pass. Item number three on today's agenda, file number SU24-024, discuss and consider action on application by District 177 Outlots LLC for preliminary and final approval of Sand Hills Mixed Use Second Subdivision located at 1105 South Dewey and described as all of Lot 4 Sand Hills Mixed Use Administrative Subdivision Number 2, North Platte, Lingan County, Nebraska.
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments attached to that as a preliminary and final subdivision for Sand Hills Mixed Use Second Subdivision. Proposed Lot 2, which is the very little rectangular shaped lot, measures 20.07 by 91.02 feet, and this will require a variance to the City of North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section 155.093D, the depth of lot shall be no more than three times the width of the lot at the building line. The subdivision will split one lot into two lots in a PB2 Planned Highway Commercial District. Public utilities are available to service the lot. Planning staff has no objections to the proposed subdivision if the variance to Section 155.093 is approved. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Why?
Well, the purchaser of the new lot did not want that skinny little 20 foot by 90 foot piece. It is really a useless lot, that Lot 2. You can't put anything on it. The mall property does currently have a sign on there, and so they wanted to retain that lot with the sign, and the other lot would go with the new building that's proposed to be there. I did tell the property owner that, again, that 20 by 90 foot lot would be of no use to anyone, so I tried to convince him to sell it to the neighboring property owner, but they wanted to keep it. So that's my why.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So they can keep their sign there and stuff like that.
Yeah, they want to keep their sign there.
And that's pretty much all that can go on there.
It's pretty much all that we'll ever be able to be on, and I'm not even sure if they want to remove that sign and replace it, if that would be allowed, more than likely they'd have to come and get a variance.
Right, they need a variance for that, too.
Yeah, yeah, and I did explain that to the applicant, but that was what they wanted to do with that. Their other option was to take that little rectangular piece and try to come up along the east or the south side of that lot to connect to a lot to the north, and I just thought that even got worse, so this was probably the better option.
So Lot 1, is that, that's an existing lot already there that?
That's where RB sits.
Yeah, but I mean, I was just curious, because you know, that's, there's access to that, what I call the old theater building, which I'm not even sure what it is now, but is there a easement in there somewhere for that, or how's that?
Yeah, they, they can access it through the mall property. There's access easements along there, and that's honestly their only way to that old movie theater building.
Yeah, I just didn't see an easement on that property, or, oh, there I see it.
Restore.
Yep.
That is now it's in there.
But yeah, that's what it is now.
Restore is in there now. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number SU24-024 preliminary and final approval of Sand Hills Mixed Use Second Subdivision and a variance to the City of North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section 155.093D, to allow the depth of a lot to exceed three times the width.
Motion by Davies, second by Bain. Any discussion? All right, click or vote. And that does pass.
Okay, this will go to the city council meeting, actually the special meeting, which is going to be held on the 29th of October.
Alrighty, moving on to item number four on the agenda, file number SU24-025, discuss and consider action on application by Murphin Incorporated for preliminary and final approval of Murphy Tractor First Replat located at 3402 South Jeffers Street and described as Lot 1 Sue Meadows Third Edition and Lot 7 and 8 Block 1 Schwarzlander Subdivision, North Platte Lingan County, Nebraska.
Okay, and again, you should have all received a copy of the preliminary and final plat and a copy of the review comments. The subdivision will reconfigure three lots into four lots in a B2 Highway Commercial District. Public utilities will be available to service the lots as part of an approved redevelopment plan. Planning staff has no objection to the proposed subdivision. With this subdivision, there is a fronted road right along Highway 83 that will be dedicated to the city. You have any questions? I am happy to answer those. I do have a phone number for the applicant. If you have any specific questions for them, we can call him.
Looks like the concrete is in out there.
Yep, they're moving right along.
I move to make a recommendation to approve file number SU24-025 preliminary and final approval of Murphy Tractor First Replat.
Motion by Bain, second by Davies. Any further discussion? All right, click or vote. And item number four does pass.
I thought that, I'll have to talk to him on that.
Moving right along to item number five on the agenda today. Item number five is a public hearing. During a public hearing, Planning Commission values your input and wants to hear from the audience. During public hearings, anyone wishing to speak must first be recognized by the chair. Once recognized, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to less than three minutes. Repetitive and excessively long testimony may be ended at the discretion of the chair. Item number five is public hearing on file number CU24-004, discuss and consider action on an application by Mark and Rochelle Miller for a conditional use permit to allow an event venue located at 3102 East State Farm Road in an A1 Transitional Agricultural District on property described as a tract of land in the east half of Section 23 Township 13 North, Range 30, west of the 6 Primoridian, Lingan County, Nebraska.
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is a justification written by the applicant. Along with that is a couple of site plans, one showing the location proximity to the Walmart DC, and the other is basically the location close to the existing buildings that are south on their property. The applicant is requesting to construct a building to allow for family gatherings, receptions, parties, meetings, and other private events. Traffic will increase in the area, but only during days and times when an event is scheduled. The venue should provide a boost to the economic character of the area and nearby gas stations, convenience stores, and hotels. There is a need for event space, specifically rustic and architecturally themed or agriculturally themed, which is something that is popular and growing. Planning staff has no objections to the conditional use application. The area is surrounded by agricultural properties to the east, south, and west with industrial uses to the north. The location provides direct access from Newberry Access Road and East State Farm Road, and traffic should not be a detriment to the surrounding area or neighboring property owners. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions, and also the applicant is in the audience.
And with that, the public hearing is open, so if anybody would wish to come and speak on this item?
I'm Mark Miller, 3102 East State Farm Road. I'm accompanied tonight by, or with, my wife Rochelle Shelley, a couple other, well, actually three family members, I guess, so. Just a little bit, our hope when coming up with this idea for this venue was to be able to offer North Platte and and the surrounding area with a unique rustic homemade venue that highlights our community's agricultural and rural background while providing a usable space for medium to larger receptions, grad- graduation parties, meetings, banquets, and other private gatherings. In our quickly growing community, the need for event space is increasing, and the rural homestead theme is ever popular. This event venue will check those boxes along with providing some income to our local gas stations, convenience stores, restaurants, hotels, along with small business caterers, events, event planners, and others such as boutiques, flower shops, et cetera. As seen on the application, the venue will be located just north of our existing buildings utilizing a long existing driveway off of State Farm Road. The plan will be to widen that driveway to allow for two-way traffic as to not affect the traffic on State Farm Road. Again, this is a private event venue, so the traffic influx would only be on days, evenings, times when there is an event scheduled. We feel we are an ideal location percent for such a venue being only one and a half miles south of Interstate eighty and less than four miles from the city center. Folks will have easy access for travel and amenities while still offering a farmhouse country feel. We hope that we can get the commission, council, and community support in passing this conditional use permit. We would also like to thank the planning commission, city council members, the planning and zoning administrator, and the many other professionals that have allowed us to bring this before you. We look forward to getting started and offering North Platte with a new and unique space for family and friends to get together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation, five oh two South Dewey. Um, I can tell you from a chamber commerce standpoint, we get inquiries, uh, uh, quite often, uh, to have this kind of a venue and having something like this, uh, that this close to North Platte be very welcome addition to the community. As always, um, would fully support the effort. Uh, but also tell you that we're one of the neighbors out there, uh, the development corporation with our Twin Rivers Business Park, and, um, we would, we would welcome additional development out there, um, and exposure to, to North Platte. I've also had the pleasure of working with Mr. Miller the last nine years. He's been our tenant farmer at Twin Rivers Business Park, and I can tell you, he cares very much about any property he's associated with, so you're in good hands, uh, with, uh, this development team that would like to do this venue and would hardly encourage you to, uh, support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can motion we close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion by Bain, second by McKeon to close public hearing. Any discussion? Alright, click or vote. And the public hearing is now closed, we will discuss amongst ourselves at the table.
I like a great idea.
How many people are you gonna be able to have in here?
Uh, capacity.
Just, just under two fifty capacity. Yeah. Yeah. I know, uh, yeah, you get much bigger than that, we're talking, uh, big money, so. But, yeah, six sixty by eighty, like, obviously bathrooms and stuff inside and then an extra ten foot patio on the backside, so sixty, or seventy by eighty, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to allow an event venue located at thirty one oh two East State Farm Road meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinances, Section one five six point three two two, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested with the condition that uh, all elements of the application are complied with based on the following factual findings. One, the use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. Two, the use shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Three, ingress and egress shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Four, the use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. And five, the use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land.
Second.
Alright, motion by Van Velson, second by Bain. Any discussion? Alright, click or vote. And item number five passes.
This will go to the city council on November fifth, it'll be the same format, basically a public hearing, you'll be allowed to speak, and then they'll take a vote.
Will there be beer?
Maybe not.
Be optimistic. Thank you, guys. Um, alright, moving on to item number six, old business. No old business, correct, Judy?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, alright, item number seven, any new business?
I don't have anything there either.
Okay, alright, well then we are adjourned.